Now called to order, clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsak?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press in the Cape May County Herald on January 6, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda for our work session, public safety, Mr. Parsak.
We'll hear from the court administrator. A few brief words, I'm sure.
I really have nothing to tell you. We're getting geared up for the summer, that's about it. Trying to, still waiting for my destruction report. That's about it. Waiting to see what you do with ordinances.
So are we.
Anybody have any questions for me?
Nope. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say to counsel that, you know, we had a meeting scheduled last Thursday that I unavoidably had to reschedule for this week because of work commitments. We have a rather lengthy agenda to go over in public safety, so hopefully not, well, maybe the next meeting or the meeting after that, we will take up more of your time.
Okay. The timing actually sounds like it's good for tonight, though, actually.
Yes, it works out. Roger?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Roger.
Report for the fire department for the month of February. Eleven fire calls, seventeen EMS calls. We're right on track with last year's calls. Calls included a cooking fire, motor vehicle accident, three natural gas leaks, two arcing wires, three fire alarms, one carbon dioxide alarm. That's my report. Emergency management's all prepared for this storm number four. You should have received your code red call. Fire department was manned tonight and tomorrow night for the storm and see what happens.
Where does that recording come from, Roger? Is that, who?
I...
When I get that call, who is that on the recording?
That's a computer-generated voice.
I see. But it comes from Stone Harbor? Comes from...
Yeah.
I don't know if it's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
First of all, I'd just like to compliment you and your staff and everybody in the fire department on that wonderful banquet we had, or you had, honoring everybody in your department, and well-deserved, and it was magnificent.
Thank you.
It was amazing.
Roger, I just wanted to mention, as long as we were talking about the automated message, that I did get two of them on my cellphone, three of them on my landline, and they were consecutive. They came, I had bells ringing all over.
So did I.
Make sure you got it.
They were all ringing at the same time.
It goes to, there's multiple databases it's picked from. So your home phone, there's a list. I guess you must have signed up for the contact list, so that's also a list. So there's 5,500 people that it's sent out to. It was done twice, because when I clicked it the first time, it didn't launch. So I clicked it the second time, then it launched twice, so.
Of course, three times.
And you get an email also, so there's no missing it. And then tomorrow, the flood sirens will sound, and so if you get flooded, it's...
Your fault.
You said it.
Thanks, Roger.
Good afternoon. The month, excuse me, the monthly report for February for the police department, there were ninety-three motor vehicle stops. One adult was arrested. In terms of personnel, Officer Dixon continues with her FTO program, that's Field Training Officer Program, and she's expected to be completed at the end of this month. Officer McCouch has completed his modified field training program and is currently assigned to a single patrol car. We have four Class II recruits that are still in training at the Cape May County Police Academy, with an expected graduation of May. And we have five SLEO-2 recruits that are progressing through the background investigations right now for, to begin in May at the academy. Conditional offers for employment are to go out this week for three Class I applicants. And in terms of personnel, that's all, that's all I have. Building update, there was a building progress meeting this morning. All seems to be moving along without any issue. Within the next two weeks, the plan is to continue with the block foundation, backfill the foundation, install an insulation, and to continue with underground piping. That's all I have.
In regards to staffing, Chief, are we on track for having a full complement of officers on board for the season?
Yes.
We are? Okay.
Shiver went out, went off without an incident, correct?
Correct. No problems at the shiver.
Good. Well-behaved group.
All reports, yes.
Good answer.
Anything else?
Some, I had talked to Chief Shudder last week about, about our schools and the safety in the schools based on current events. And Chief Shudder's been in contact with the Avalon Police Chief in working out what measures perhaps we could implement going forward to maybe afford a bit more protection. And when you get that worked out, then you'll let us know what plans, if any, or what we can do to help you implement what you feel needs to be implemented.
Yes, we've already increased the foot patrols at the school, walk-throughs, things of that nature. And I've been in contact with Stacy Tracy from Avalon Schools, as well as Dr. Murtaugh from the school here. More contact in the past month than I've probably ever had with them, because of the concern, of course. We constantly train at our school during range qualifications and things like that. We have our officers walk through the Avalon School, just to get a feel, excuse me, a feel for the layout. And the Avalon officers have come down to our school to train, to go through the school, you know, when school's not in session. And I actually have a meeting coming up in, two meetings in April, with members of the school and school board to, in conjunction with the Avalon Chief, just to elasen any type of fears, or, you know, just to make sure they're okay with, you know, everything that's been going on, and what measures we have in place to combat anything that, God forbid, something like that happens here.
So, I don't know, I don't know the different colors of money, like, but if there's any, anything that you, law enforcement feels could be done to the buildings to make them safer? I mean, is that, that's just not the school board, I mean, that's, I would think that's the borough's interest as well, to see that it gets done.
I was thinking, in conjunction with the school board, you would find out, yeah, I think as, as a whole, we'll just, we'll make sure they get everything they need in terms of surveillance cameras, or whatever there needs to be there.
Correct. Part of those measures are, with the meetings coming up, they'd ask for advice on certain things, what they can do to harden the school and things of that nature. There's plans in place to remodel the front entrance of the school in terms of how people come and go, with security access and things like that. So they're, they are way on board with upgrading things and, you know, bulletproofing things and so forth, things like that. They're, they're, they're on it.
What do they have in place, the closed door where you ring the bell?
They do, but it, it's, it's really not...
It's obsolete, is it?
It, it was good at the time. Good at the time. The way things have happened now, they're going to harden it more, where, once you get in that front door, you can't just walk into the second door. You know what I mean? They're gonna, they're gonna have, they're gonna move the office reception-type area with bulletproof glass, so it's, it's gonna be much better security, just at least at the front door.
I was at a function at the Dennis Township Primary School this past week, and they had quite a bit you went through, then you had to show ID, and your ID went through a machine, a picture came out.
Correct.
You had to wear that. There was a lot as far as security going on there.
Correct. And we're fortunate, because this, our, our Stone Harbor school's pretty small. To be honest with you, I'd never been in the Avalon School until a week ago, and what a difference that was. So I'm, thank God, I'm pleased with how tiny our school is, and it's quite manageable for us, God forbid we have to go in there, as compared to the Avalon School, and, you know, even schools that are larger than that. It's a nightmare for all the little nooks and crannies that are involved with closets and hallways and so on and so forth. Our school's, you know, it's one main drag, basically, and that's it, so. But I think we're going in the right direction. Where I, we've developed an ad hoc type committee for school security, myself, Captain Palmer and Sergeant Jackson, and we've been reviewing what we have to, to make our policy. We, right now, we go by the state attorney general's policies and the county policies, and we're kind of formulating them down into a policy that's specific to Stone Harbor. You know, do the best we can with, with that. So, you know, I think we're headed in the right direction. That's about it.
Thank you, Chief. I just have one, one other. Jill, did, did you get a chance to look at that lifeguard stand issue with aluminum versus wood, or not, going forward?
I have started to research it.
Okay.
I want to, I want to look into it a little bit more. Yeah, I haven't gotten enough concrete info to...
Okay, all right.
...give a recommendation.
Okay. That concludes public safety.
Okay. Recreation and tourism. Miranda, would you present your report, please?
Happy spring! Glorious! What a difference a day makes. We had a beautiful Mayor's Wellness Campaign walk yesterday on the beach. Very little wind, sun was shining, so at least we got that in for yesterday, but. So, good afternoon, everyone. Just today, I was able to publish all the summer information on all of our media outlets for youth and adult programs, camps, leagues, and clinics. So if you haven't already seen that, through your phones or on your desktops, it's out there. So if you have any questions, just let me know, but it's all live and available for the public to view. The Mayor's Wellness Campaign is going really, really well, so our walk went great yesterday. We have our final lecture at the Recreation Building this Thursday, and then we wrap it up next week. So eight weeks went really, really fast. I can't believe how quickly eight weeks can go, but next Thursday morning is our final yoga with the Stone Harbor Elementary Kiddos. And kudos to Amy Smith, Amy Sue Smith, with Soul Luna Yoga and Mayor Judy, because they've really inspired these kids. It's a really beautiful thing to watch, so thank you for allowing us to do this.
It's been fun.
It's been really, really cute. And then the finale for the adults will be held at the Harbor Square Theater, where we're going to enjoy some laughs with a movie and popcorn, starting at 6:00 PM. So I'll be releasing details to the group tomorrow. So that's as far as recreation goes, and as far as tourism goes, we have about eighty-five percent of the exhibitors returning from last year. And I am currently and diligently recruiting new artists to exhibit their work in this year's show. So if you guys know of anybody that is an artist and would like to exhibit, please let me know. Other than that, we're just getting ready for summer. Any questions?
In addition to that, we conducted a farmer's market meeting, and Kim has the reins, Kim Stevenson has the reins on that. She has, she has it under complete control. She knows who's coming and going, who's paid and who hasn't. The nice thing about our farmer's market is that there's no duplication of services. If somebody sells pickles, nobody else is selling pickles. And that's what the beauty is, because it's worth the walk all the way around. And it's not going to be long. It's just going to be in a few short weeks that we're going to be looking at our, cutting the parsley again. So...
So, thank you.
That's under, that's all under control.
Thanks, Miranda.
Thank you.
Anything more? No? Wow, now? Natural resources, lots of stuff.
I'll pass these out. Dr. Lenore Tedesco is going to do a very interesting presentation.
We have shortchanged you in time for so long. Now you have all you need. Maybe.
Never know, thank you. Okay. A little small. Look at this.
I'll give them mine.
I can read it, but it's very tiny. Of course you would. I'll give you a dollar.
Oh, my God. Nobody can read that many.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for taking the time to think through bulkhead heights with us. It's been an interesting run, and yes, it's spring, so it's a good time to be thinking about this. As you know, the ad hoc committee looking at flood mitigation planning has been meeting and talking about bulkhead heights. At the last presentation we did, we talked about the Stockton Coastal Research Center study that went and measured bulkhead heights, and the data in that report was presented as specific bulkhead points, and it was a lot of discussion about the need to convert those bulkhead points to actually properties. And I'm going to just kind of show you a little bit of how we did that assessment. And I did the analyses based on that report, and I've given you some handouts to kind of talk through this, and it gets a little complex. I've tried to, try to make it a little bit clean for you, so feel free to ask questions as we go. I don't want to jump too far ahead. So that data set, again, this was the Stockton data set, was eight hundred and thirty-one individual points that were shot, so each property had at least one point on their, somewhere on their bulkhead to create an elevation. They then went and added another four hundred and fifty-five points to help them define the extent individual bulkhead, so that meant they might have shot at one end of the bulkhead and then at another. For some properties, there were multiple points, eight, ten points on a bulkhead. So what we needed to do is figure out how to convert that to properties. In addition, though, if, in fact, several properties got together and built one bulkhead across several properties, what they did when they did that is they shot one point, and then they assigned that elevation to a series of parcels, where it made sense that it was continuous. So at the end, we have those factors in here, and we started with basically fourteen hundred data points of elevations that were shot.
Lenore, excuse me for a minute.
Yep.
Do we want to ask questions from page to page, can we?
Sure, whatever, whatever, whenever you have a question, ask it.
Okay. I wanted to know, right off the bat, what determined for them to have more than two minimums, one at each bulkhead? Why did they determine one, or somebody gets two, or somebody gets...
Right. I would assume it's because... So they were in a boat, and then at some times, they walked along the bulkhead shot, and they were taking a shot. So if they thought they could get a better measurement at one plane, or they thought that area was a little higher or lower, they would shoot other points.
Okay.
This is just in the field deciding to take more measurements.
And explains that. So it was random? Kind of random?
Well, it was based on the decision in the field to capture the best data.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So I don't expect you to read that, but this is what the data set sort of looked like. It was, sometimes there was one point carried through multiple, sometimes there was a property location, other times there wasn't. So it was a really extensive data set. So what we did is we, for each bit of data, there was a property defined by a block and lot. And then, as I said, some block and lots had multiple points, so there would be block and lot repeated with a whole bunch of elevations. At other times, there would be example where one person purchased five lots and built one house on that. So there's one owner, there's now five block and lots that would need to be collapsed to one property. Okay? And you could see where that would happen. So now I have five points that are actually one. And in all of those cases, we'd want that to just be one property. So what we did is, I went through and ran a bunch of logic models to compress the data down and recognize that, and then I took all of that, and we assigned the lowest elevation to that property, because that's what we're concerned about, right? It's not, if somebody's property has got a 4.5-foot bulkhead, and later, you know, on the other end of the property, it's six, we want to know about the 4.5 point. So we assigned the lowest elevation there, and then I went in and assigned the blind property number. So we're not talking about Jim Smith, we're talking about property eighty-eight, just to not convert into that. So at the end, that thirteen hundred and ninety-eight bulkhead data points ended up converting down to four hundred and twenty-seven properties. Okay, now, this is one example of the borough of Stone Harbor, was a bit of a challenge. So this particular parcel, it's the Marina, you can see how many shots they made, okay? So that maybe gets to your, to your...
It does.
You can see, so they decided they needed to hit all those spots, and you can see it's different elevations at different points along the bulkhead. For the borough, the property owner was listed as the borough of Stone Harbor. This particular spot has something like sixteen parcels, but it's all one place. Okay? But there are also other places that the borough owns that are elsewhere. So if I just collapsed it by ownership, it merged five properties into one. So that didn't work. And then there was really no location information, so it didn't tell me this was at the Eightieth Street Marina. So, so these became some challenge points, and I had to manually, I think the borough had sixty-three points on like twelve properties or something, so I had to manually adjust for that. I mentioned, this is some of the challenges, just so that you're aware of them in terms of how you think about the data. For some of the properties, where there was a bulkhead along several properties, they shot a point, and then they assigned that value to other properties. Sometimes, the assignment ended up on an adjacent property, just based on the error in a, in the satellite positioning. So if it was here versus here, they assigned the same value, maybe incorrectly, and you could see that in a couple of places. Sometimes, when I did the data compression, if the same owner had a bunch of parcels that assigned one, they might have actually owned two separate houses with the same name and six parcels, and really four parcels, one house and two parcels were another house. So I had to find that and tease that out. And you can just see the way some of this might have happened. If they occurred on different basins, it came up, obviously, the same, it wasn't. But if they were all in the same basin, that might have been a problem. And then sometimes, if somebody's ownership wasn't consistent, so this is mapping by name, so if, if John Smith bought two parcels at Snug Harbor, and then two years later, he added the next parcel adjacent to him, because it became for sale, but he registered it as John E. Smith, this would see it as two different parcels. So all of this is embedded in the data reduction and finding these, these, these changes. So here's a couple of those examples. In this particular case, this one was kind of sloppy, and I kind of went and checked it. So here, the logic model went and said, oh, okay, all of these properties are the same, I knew they were the same person, but it went and said, property eighty-eight grouped those four, because they were bought at one time with the same name. Property eighty-seven, the guy added his middle initial. Property eighty-nine, there was no space between the first and second name, and the second property eighty-eight and the first property eighty-eight were exactly spelled the same. So what it did is it made the two property eighty-eights one, and assigned one value, and made that three properties. Okay? So you could just see how this can be a challenge. So I could find them when they were in different basins. Did Jim Smith really have two houses and two basins? And then I could go and find them out. So there's, to some extent, there, I could find some of them and tease them out. The reality is, though, for the most part, folks that were doing these combining tended to have higher bulkheads. So it's kind of, if you think about it, right, somebody that's linking six properties is probably less of a concern. So I didn't find this to be a case where we were missing low bulkheads. So I think it, it works out. And it, these are small problems, but I want you to be aware of them in the way this worked. Here's another example where this, this person has two sets, three sets of two properties, parcels linked, there's one house on each, same owner, it made that one property, right? But I could find that and re-separate it out. And if it's on one basin, I can't see it, because I added a second logic model to say which basin is it in, which page is it on, so you could see those crosses. And then here's one where there was a clear mistake, where the supplemental data, I don't know if you can't actually see the very bottom, but the assignment of 3.88, which is clearly something that would be something we'd want to see, it was assigned to correctly where it was, but it was also assigned to the adjacent bulkhead that's actually at 6.1. You see that? And it's just that close of a difference where you would see that. So we had, we teased those out, and I did find a lot of them and correct them. And again, of the fourteen hundred points, we're talking about, you know, less than eighty points that I could find like this, so. And a bunch of them were manually corrected, but that doesn't mean there's not a few more tucked in there.
So each of these properties that you're showing on here, and you determine 6.2 or 3.9, that's the elevation it's at at the present time?
That's the elevate, that was the elevation as determined by the Stockton report, where they went out and shot an elevation and tied.
So the ones that are in, lower than even what our ordinance is at this time, they have to bring it up?
Well, that's the question, right? So what this, this part of the study was to determine what the current situation was of the bulkheads in the borough, and how does that get factored into considerations about bulkhead ordinance? So the first part of this was converting it to properties instead of just the bulkhead numbers. So here is the results, the preliminary results, and some more massaging that could be done. And so what I'm showing you is the number of properties, and I've bin them by groupings of height. Okay? So there are nine bulkheads that are higher than eight feet of elevation, and everything is NAVD-88, right? You guys, your ordinances are all converting to that. So we're all talking about one elevation plane for conversation. Hundred and twenty of them are between 6.2 and eight. And I use 6.2 as a cut, because 6.2 is your current bulkhead elevation. Okay? So that's why I use that number. Then I went 5.5 to 6.2, and there's a hundred and forty-nine there. There's forty-three between five and five and a half. It's a hundred and four between four and five, and there's eleven between three and four. Now, it's important to note, of the eleven that are between three and four feet, four of them are boat ramps that we know of. So those are, right, something else that, in the event there is a bulkhead ordinance, you probably need some way to capture a requirement to block a ramp, because it's not a bulkhead. So it would fall through that. But there are still seven others that are, that are that low.
So our main concern as we, I'm sorry, I'm asking so many questions, but...
No, that's, that's fine.
Our main concern would be the eleven that are 3.4 to start with, and then the other ones are 4.5 all the way up. That's for us to determine.
That's for you to determine. That's a policy discussion, but what I also then went and tried to add on to here is an understanding of the frequency of flooding based on the last, like, decade of data, on how often properties flood. And when you look at this, if you are, if you're, if there's a bulkhead that's between, that's above 5.5 feet in height, or it's lower than 5.5, it floods only once in about five years. If it's lower than that, it floods much more frequently. And that's why we started looking at the importance of 5.5 feet. If your bulkhead's between five and 5.5 feet, it, it floods at least once a year, maybe even a little bit more often than once a year. So when you're making decisions about where you want to manage bulkhead elevations, those are some of the things that come into effect. If you drop down further into something about, that's only four feet in elevation, that floods almost seven times a year. You go lower than that, and you're between seventy and twenty times a year, depending on where you are on that three to 3.5. So, so I just put those up there. And the other thing we have to think about is, that flood frequency is based on current sea level level. So if you're thinking about an ordinance that would be to require modifications to bulkheads that have a thirty-year lifespan, the flooding frequency is going to increase for these same elevations, because the base level is coming up. So that's part of the discussion point, yeah.
Not to interrupt, but I think it's important to note, just so everyone's on the same page, that our current ordinance, and I'm fairly certain I'm correct, is currently dictates that you go to 6.2 as for this.
Correct, yeah. And that is something to think about, and your current ordinance of 6.2 has been in place since the mid-eighties, I believe, and even with that much time requiring a 6.2, the vast majority of the bulkheads in the borough are still below that elevation. So there's a long lead time here to bulkheads coming up to height based on the current triggers in your ordinance. So that's another component, to just think about how you would write an ordinance associated with bulkhead heights. And then again, obviously, it's a policy decision, what height you select, and if there are any triggers that would necessitate coming up to ordinance. The other component of this, I mentioned the borough was manually adjusted. The street ends are not included in this. There's data on street ends, but it wasn't part of the Excel spreadsheets, so there's just a listing of there. Some of the street ends are low, and that's a different, those are borough presumably responsibility, but they were not in the Excel spreadsheet. So that table didn't include these, and you could see some of them are in the four, 4.5, 5.4. And exactly what they mean, where the points were shot, that says, you know, Public Works would know what this means, but there is another component of this to be considered separate from... But there is another component of this to be considered, separate from the property ordinance, is the Borough ownership of, with Borough management requirement of managing bulkheads at street ends is a different component to this. So as you go forward, I think there's some, you need to give some thought to this. I think, as I said, I think it's a pretty balanced approach. There are some times where some bins may be underrepresented because some values were merged. And, you know, there were, one point was assigned where maybe there were two. But I also think there are some that are overrepresented because it went in the other direction. So I don't think those numbers are that different in terms of where they are. But they're, which individual property it is, there may be some need. So I think you need to think through whether you need a physical bulkhead check, where that would occur. I mean, this is more of the process of working through it. Failing bulkheads that are leaking won't appear in this assessment because a bulkhead that's five feet or six feet high, that's failing and leaking, isn't going to be captured in this. So you may still have, even with the bulkhead ordinance, without getting into some of those questions, you may still have some challenges there. There's going to be questions about owner-supplied elevations, how you would treat that. There's a lot of that kind of component in here. And then there's also potentially a challenge associated with people that, in fact, built a bulkhead they believed was to 6.2, which is the current ordinance, but is lower, whether that's because there was an error in the construction or an error in the surveying. There's going to be those kinds of questions that are going to come up that are going to need to be part of this. And then I would urge you to have a communication plan in place as you go forward with this. So any other questions specific to this? I have a couple of other comments.
I have one comment, and that is that I think too often, a governing body has the ability to just come up with a good number. And a yeoman's task that you took, this is a mammoth undertaking.
It was fun.
Well, for you, it would be fun. That's the kind of stuff that you like. But for you, it's a great accomplishment to be able to really... We're not doing any guessing here. It's all concrete, so any decision...
The data sources, the Stockton surveys, remember that. So they did a lot of work on the front side of this to provide the information.
Well, they need the leadership. They need a direction. We thank you for that.
Well, I appreciate that. A couple of the comments. So the committee then met reviewing this information and... Do you want to do that? Okay, so they talked a little bit, and they're considering assortment of things. But to update you on that, they're considering a bulkhead height of eight feet as a potential for the new ordinance. That obviously is a discussion point here. And then having that apply when a bulkhead is replaced or with some other triggers, that would be against policy discussions, whether there's a certain amount of change to the property or a certain amount of upgrading to the property.
What do you think about that eight-foot decision?
I think that's an appropriate one, and it's based on... The reason that came up is because of the CRS ratings require a planning curve to use a sea level projection that accounts for another two feet of rise in your planning. So when you start putting that, you're at six now. So that would kind of push you into that eight-foot range for planning. I think it's pretty important that you maintain your CRS ratings. I mean, so that's a, that's a minimum there.
Well, there's a lot of discussion about that to be had because you're going eight foot, and you have a home, that's an older home, that's small and on the ground like this. Now, if you look at it, they would have to go up from the back of their property and then probably go down. I'm not an engineer, but I would think...
That situation, that's correct. I mean, there are considerations, whether people are going to fill or not fill. There are several properties that have already done that, and you can see it, and they've landscaped it. And, you know, certainly people are going to have a lot of opinion about that. That's a, that's a different consideration. That's a policy consideration. There was a discussion about a need to consider whether there's triggers for requiring bulkheads to be elevated even in the absence of a full rebuild and what that would look like, some timing. And there was a lot of discussion hinged on that 5.5-foot mark. If your bulkhead's below 5.5, you need to come up to at least 6.2 over some time period, not just waiting, because you see how long it takes for bulkheads to actually move. So there was a concept that there might be a trigger, a time trigger. You had to be up to a certain level by a certain point in time, and that was still being discussed. And there was a second trigger point that said by a certain time point, you would have to be at eight feet. Again, regardless of whether there was a rebuild or any of the other triggers for the folks that are just kind of sitting around and never got around to changing it, there might be a need to input some timestamps that by time X or time Y, you would need to be up to a certain level. And again, the committee felt that 5.5 feet was important because the difference between less than 5.5 and higher than 5.5 was a big difference in the flood frequency. If you're trying to manage nuisance flooding, that would be an important consideration. The committee's meeting again the 27th and addressing several other considerations, construction considerations, understanding what some of those things look like, financing potential. So there's a lot of other aspects that they're working through before, I guess, and they'll be bringing a recommendation forward.
We're getting closer.
Yeah.
We're getting closer.
Yeah, one more.
Yes. And then Ray, the committee's going to bring forward to council everything that you're, Josie, everything you're...
When we, when all of it is ready, or when this phase of it is ready, yes.
When, with your constructive recommendations.
Correct.
Because there's an awful lot of questions. How about somebody just put in a new bulkhead at 6.2? Now you're going to go to eight.
Well, that would be one of those trigger time lags. That's, that's, those are the reasons those kinds of things are in there. How do you, how does that work?
You have, you just can't set a policy. You have to take in consideration homes, people. That's part of it, without just saying we're doing an ordinance or... You have to think about the whole picture.
I think for sure there's going to be appropriate relief in there for people who have newly installed bulkheads. And I think there's other measures, they can be capped to be brought up so it doesn't involve removal and replacement in kind. There's, and I think there will be a considerable, I would hope there would be considerable relief for people who have newly installed bulkheads. Newly installed ones are not, as you can see from that, the graph, are really, they don't have frequent flooding. So perhaps they're given a period as long as 30 to 40 years, a natural lifetime for a bulkhead, at which time then they have to comply. So I agree with you, there's tons of issues. But I think any ordinance is going to delineate where we have chronic failures, and they need to be brought up to the new level almost immediately. And then there's people who are in the gray area in the middle who have considerably more time. And then you have people who have really new ones that should be given.
Yeah, I think that's true. Most of the newer bulkheads are pretty close. Or there, I think an important point, the 6.2-foot, well, the 5.5 is an important one just because of the flood frequency. And then a 6.2-foot is another one that people that are meeting your existing ordinance, that's where you may say, okay, if you're at 6.2 or thought you were at 6.2, you have until, you know, they would even talk in 2050 to bring that to eight feet. Whereas you might want a little bit of a tighter timeline on these ones that are really causing nuisance flooding. I mean, there's the other side of that coin, too, right, is you're creating problems for other people as well. So I think that's, that's the policy part of this. All we were trying to do at the committee level was bring the information together to come forward with some recommendations that then can obviously be discussed at the policy.
And trust me when I say we have talked about this, we have talked about this, and every scenario that could be thought of pretty much has been thought of to make it fair and equitable for everybody. So it did a lot of work.
Just wanted you to see the underpinning information that's going into some of this. The next topic, if I can move forward, is there were, there are proposed changes to the coastal barrier resource system designations that were just put out by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and we're currently in an open comment period through early July, if there's an interest in putting out some comments on the part of the Borough. Portions of Stone Harbor and the Back Bays are currently included within the coastal barrier resource system. It's part of what's called New Jersey Unit 09. This is what is the current map. There's two colors in there, you can't really see them, but there's kind of a finger. So right here, this is a slightly different color. This is what's called an otherwise protected area, and then these other ones are in pink. It's the color washed out on here. That's the current designations, and you are probably more familiar with this designation as it relates to the offshore areas of Hereford Inlet. And effectively, what happens is any resources, coastal barrier resources that are inside these units, you cannot use federal dollars to move that resource outside of the unit. So you've all been struggling with that related to the sand source area, the dredging sand source area for Hereford Inlet sits out here within the CBRS, which is why you were not allowed to use the federal money to, for the dredging project, right? So that's the whole other reason you guys know about this, this issue. So having said that, the proposed changes to this do impact the Borough in some ways. So I gave you the handout of this sheet, and this is the proposed changes to those units. So you could see the first fairly simple part is the two pink areas. They're going to reclassify those areas from these otherwise protected units to make them part of the system unit. That's just really a simplification, just changes a little bit what you can and can't do inside of them. But perhaps more interesting is the areas that are being added into the CBRS unit by this proposed designation. It actually extends the area offshore, you know? I assume it because the, but I don't know, but I assume it's because the shoaling complex is extending south, so they were capturing that as part of the same. It's, this is a Fish and Wildlife Service designation, so they tend to be mapping against wildlife units and the need to protect wildlife by not moving sand. They do capture the north end of Wildwood, which is not your issue, but a major issue for them because it prevents them from using federal dollars to maintain the bulkheads along the north shore of Wildwood, which I'm guessing they will be commenting about. And it also extends the unit far to the north, including the intracoastal waterway and a lot of the area of marshland that is, some of that is state lands, and the state will be commenting on that. But some of it actually extends into the back bays behind Sedge Island and captures your basins behind Sedge Island. I have no idea why they do that. There are a lot of mud flats in that, in the area up in here that I think they're trying to protect for wildlife uses in here. I suspect the Army Corps has some comments about this, since now they've captured a fairly large chunk of the intracoastal waterway as well. So not sure what that means, but it's just to make the Borough aware that this is, these proposed changes are there. Yeah. Okay? Do you want to? I'm done with the, with this part of the presentation, but I have one other thing to discuss.
Okay. Well, just for the sake of the record, so I just will... Should we turn it off or?
I can do that.
Okay. So I can talk into the microphone for the sake of the minutes, it'll be easier. Easier for the transcription. Thank you.
So as far as the changes with the CBRS, there was, I was on a conference call last Tuesday with the mayor of North Wildwood, Patrick Rosinello, with Avalon's Borough Administrator, Scott Wall, with their Assistant Administrator, Jim Waldron, and Dr. Farrell from Stockton, and Eric Rourke from DEP, and an individual by the name of Howard, where'd Lenore go? Howard Muth, Marth, Martho? Anyway, and here's the, yes, the long and short of it. With the maps and the increased size of the maps, now North Wildwood's going to have a problem with maintaining their seawall, getting federal dollars to maintain their seawall. So they're looking at a need for this, to be there, some kind of change in how this designation's going to work and when something is considered an exception. So North Wildwood is facing some financial hardships in regard that they can't use federal funds. We are facing hardships in the regard that we can't use federal funds for beach replenishment. This cannot be a Borough area. And that was something that we came up against the last time we did the beach replenishment. And as a result, we had to borrow money, and the state supplemented us as well. So now the state has an interest in saying that there be some exceptions made to whether or not this can be a Borough area for beach replenishment or whether or not it can be infringed upon to maintain North Wildwood's seawall. So at this point, this individual by the name of Howard Merlot, he is a consultant that's been retained by Avalon. And what they're doing is they're, they're trying to draft some language and propose that on a congressional level to get some changes within this, the entire CBRAs. Some states have been successful already. North Carolina had some changes made already. Somewhere in the Midwest had some changes already. So the hope is that we can get somebody to listen, and we can get some changes made in the map or get some changes made in the, in making beach nourishment and maintaining that seawall an exception to when you can actually go, go there. So here's the plan. The plan is to meet with members of the staff of the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee sometime in early May. The public comment period for this goes until, I want to say, July 14th. So what is happening is we're trying to see if we can get somebody to listen on a one-on-one in a small meeting, actually, in Washington. Now, in addition to that, last Friday, at the Cape May County Conference of Mayor's monthly luncheon, there was a member of, Mayor Pickelicky from Woodbine had arranged for a member of the governor's office to attend the luncheon. And it was basically just to see, you know, what kind of things we have in southern New Jersey, Cape May County. This individual represented the seven lower counties. What's on our radar and what should the governor think should be putting on his radar? So this was one of the things that I mentioned to her, to just school the governor and school herself on the fact that these changes, number one, without the changes, they cause problems for Cape May County. With changes, they're going to cause even more problems with Cape May County, and it's going to result in more state funds being needed to help us down here in Cape May County. So there is activity going on in trying to get somebody's attention. Overall, there's been some disappointment in getting Lobiondo's attention and seeing if perhaps he could make some inroads for us. So that's kind of where some more extra information that I got just last week on this. It was like an emergency conference call last Tuesday. And then the woman from the governor's office was at the luncheon on Friday. So it is really on the radar, and there is, we've got concerns with our neighboring communities, and there's always strength in numbers. So that's what I can add to that.
Yeah. Just one other thing to add to that, the, just by way of some interest, the Army Corps is, and the state DEP, the Endangered Non-Game Species Program, are also got their eyebrows up a little bit in that the current projects that are using, the beneficial use projects that are using the repetitive dredging that's required of the intracoastal waterway was formerly outside of this area, and they were moving that sand using federal dollars to clear the material and then putting it also outside the area. This adjustment puts one of the areas inside and one outside, so effectively shutting down the Army Corps' ability to dredge the shoals in the intracoastal waterway. So that may then be another exception to this. So there's a lot of moving parts, and the other side...
And the fact that they allowed us twice. They made the exception twice. I can't, I know 2012 was one, maybe? I can't remember the other one where the exception was made.
It was Irene.
And then now they're saying, no, that exception should have never been made at that time. So that's actually perhaps something on our side to say, well, you made this exception twice. And then the other thing that, you know, perhaps another way, you know, another angle is the fact that Stu Farrell had said, since the beach replenishments have begun, the point has built. And we've got this wonderful conservation area at the point, and if we stop being able to do our beach nourishment, we could, in effect, start to have, that could have a detrimental effect on exactly what they're trying to preserve.
Right. Well, and that's the same thing that the state Endangered Non-Game Species Program is saying. Remember, this is federal, but the state Non-Game Species Program, and also the renourishment areas that were just built up on Ring Island again are also something the state Endangered Non-Game Species Program is pushing very hard in partnership with the Army Corps. So you got kind of the left-hand, right-hand contradictions here in terms of how to manage this. So who knows what happens, but, so there are other, there are other components in here. And remember, the project that was done at Stone Harbor Point that the Borough was a partner on, that was using federal dollars to create the resiliency at Stone Harbor Point, the Borough signed a partnership agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to maintain that habitat. So there's another interesting angle there, that they're effectively cutting off that habitat even though they're in partnership with you to maintain that habitat. I think there's some other interesting things that could be brought potentially into this discussion.
And I'm not, I mean, maybe Jill will know how, more on this, but, and also Army Corps has invested interest because they have a 50-year agreement to help us maintain the beaches as well as North Wildwood. They're in agreement with North Wildwood to maintain that seawall. So Army Corps is looking at that, how can we help if we can't bring any money to the table, no federal funds? So there's so much going on to try to get somebody.
Correct.
To say in Washington, we get it and there's so much conflict here and so much, yeah, that we can make that exception.
Yeah. The other, the other thing is too with, if we can't use that with the Army Corps money and they, and they are obligated to restore the beaches for us, the only place to go is where Avalon is currently taking their sand from. And the problem with that is you, they're limited as to how much they can take out at one time, so you're not going to be able to take care of all three communities. And the risk that you have with that, with the frequency increase is that it then becomes detrimental to Seisle.
Right.
So it, the whole thing is just spiraling out of control.
And I think Stu Farrell was addressing Avalon either yesterday or today on this very issue. I thought, for some reason, I thought he was going to be here today.
No.
To talk about this. Okay. Any questions? So I'll keep you posted what I hear as they move along. There is some, Jill has seen it, there's some proposed language to actually bring forward to say, well, how about this? But right now they're trying to figure, yeah, it was a first blush and then it'll come forward to actually take it to Washington with some proposed, some changes in the language.
Okay. I just, one more topic I was asked to address today, and that's the nuisance flood study that Stockton will be doing for you, that I believe you had a resolution at the last, at the last meeting for. This was to move forward with monitoring various locations in the borough with pressure sensors that'll monitor water levels that you can more accurately understand where flooding is occurring at different points in time. So these pressure sensors will be installed into the storm drain network. They're just little small devices that effectively record water, but through pressure. So we had a meeting last week with members from Stockton and they met with Grant Russ, Mark de Blasio, Jill was there, your OEM Coordinator, Josie Rich and I, and we walked through and talked about different places we might want to have these sensors installed to get the best data. There'll be a rain gauge at the Public Works Building to measure local rainfall rather than using a more distant source to, for accuracy, that's important. And they're going to install, I guess, a total of 16 sensors will be in storm drains in different places. Some of them will be down, down lower in the vaults to get a better handle on things and some will be attached to the bottom of the storm grates. And the group went through and tried to select places where we thought we had flooding that was really related to rainfall and not so much tidal, to try to separate the different things. We found places where we thought it might be related to tidal flooding, whether it's by low elevation or failing bulkheads versus anything that might be related to any of the duckbills. And then also whether there are areas where we had high groundwater table that might be infiltrating into the stormwater system. So we spent quite a bit of time and kind of made sure we had a spectrum of different places to try to be able to tease apart the causes, which then could feed back into the planning for how you might want to try to mitigate that, whether it's going to be bulkhead ordinances, upgrading the stormwater system, adding your pump stations at different places, managing the duckbills. There's a whole series of options that are going to be needed at different points in different places to, to address nuisance flooding. So this is another step in gathering information for that. So that study is moving forward and I assume soon.
And I think I asked you, it's going to be a year, is that right, about?
So it, the original proposal was for one year and we actually, Jill had to modify that so that it would extend through a certain number of events because if you, you know, they're not in, so we not, we didn't capture these events. So, but if we only end up with one or two flooding events, that's not going to be enough information to really help. So it was actually extended out for them to capture four to five events. And hopefully they could do that. So it wasn't necessarily a start end, it was a get the right data needs and we increased the number of sensors at that point in time. We also made sure we included a couple of locations where some work had been done to address nuisance flooding so that we could use those sort of as control areas and show improvement as well. So it was, it's just a more comprehensive study with some of the communications that we've had. Jill, we're looking forward to seeing that data.
And that's the study too, that the POA is helping to fund. So we are moving along.
Yeah.
What did they say they were going to start? I forget. Soon?
Yesterday would have been awesome.
Today be better?
Today, yeah, not so much. Any other questions for me? That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lenore.
Is this next, Jill?
Ray's next, yeah.
Ray's next?
I just wanted to go over real quick the planning board. I've addressed on several meetings that we're looking at the floodplain ordinance, how it relates, when the new floodplain ordinance was adopted, it wasn't necessarily how it related to the zoning ordinance, a few issues weren't taken care of. So in November, when FEMA's mapping changed and we adopted our new floodplain ordinance, it sort of took the X zones out of the picture. And so I've drawn up a map, we've, Andrew and I and the planning board have been going around and around the current ordinance. And so I drew up the first picture on the white page, shows the current ordinance. So the green line would be the grade, if you were looking at Avalon at grade throughout, you could look down Stone Harbor at your land, that would be your grade with the beach being on your, on your left, okay? And the bay over here. And it shows the different heights of structures, crawl space heights and elevations of the peaks of the roofs of the houses. That's basically the current ordinance and how many different zones we have. We have from V-zone to X-zones, we have AO-zones, we have AE8, AE9, AE10. And then we have what's called a coastal AE-zone, which is, there's a limb wall line, a limited wave action line that runs along the bay and it comes into the land on several of the, along the bay. And that becomes a coastal A. And the difference between a coastal A and the V-zone is the type of construction, how high your building has to be. So this is basically a picture of the current ordinance. Then we were proposing, what happened was, when we took the nine-foot required elevation out of our ordinance, per FEMA's, FEMA recommended an ordinance for us when they were doing the new mapping. And that ordinance took the nine-foot minimum elevation out. And so anybody in the X-zone technically could build a house as high as they want. We're still limited by two stories right now, but the crawl space could be five foot eleven and that doesn't constitute a story. So someone in the highest portion of town could actually build a house right now per our zoning ordinance could be as high as 36, 37 feet. So we, we're trying to get rid of that problem by adopting the new ordinance. So it was suggested after going round and round that we come up with a, similar to what Seisle has, which would also help with the CRS program. It gives us basically maybe one more foot for a lot of our properties for our freeboard. And it brings that X-zone back into scope with the rest of the town by regulating it. So we suggested doing 11-foot, we, we added 11-foot to top of block or to top of your foundation was the suggestion to bring, and so that all the, it'll be like island-wide basically. Okay? So what we did was Andrew wanted to keep the two zones we have. Right now we're plus two, our freeboard is plus two feet, okay, from base flood elevation. And because the X-zone does not have a base flood elevation, that's why they can go as high as they want right now. So what we did was we added design flood elevation, which is what our engineers and design professionals do. So we were suggesting adding, adding the definition of design flood elevation into our ordinance and making that be plus two or as per the engineering standard, which is ACSE 24, or 11 feet, the most restrictive. Okay? And to do that, that's what this new, the Mylar will do, that would be the suggested elevations. And so if you put that over the current ones, what you can see is in the coastal A, the height of the structure doesn't change. And you're regulated by CAFRA when you're in the coastal A. In the AE10s, it doesn't change. In the AE9s, it does, it changes by one foot. So you could gain another foot. If we do go with the 11-foot minimum to top of block, that means when you're in a nine-foot zone, it's possible you could get another foot of elevation to the peak of your structure. In an eight, you could get approximately two feet higher of a structure, but then it brings the X-zone back down into play with the rest of the, rest of them where right now it could be significantly higher. And in the V-zones, you could be approximately another foot higher. So what I wanted to show you, I also, when I was at the planning board meeting, I had gone on top of the Hull Harbor and took pictures of the island from the rooftops. And when you're up there, you can't tell the difference. When you're on ground, we've got two homes going up on 86th Street in the beach. One is in a V-zone, a V-12. The house right next to it is in an eight-zone. So we've got a, two houses side by side with almost a five-foot difference. I think it's 4.6 feet difference in two structures that are side by side on 86th Street right now, brand-new structures going up because of our current flood ordinance, the difference. And so what we are trying to do is bring them, when you have that scenario, bring them closer to the crawl space. But, but what I want to say is when you're standing on the ground at those houses and you look up, nobody could know. I tried, you can't tell that there's a four-foot difference in the peaks, but when you look at the crawl space, what you see from standing on sidewalk is very significant when you look at the houses. So I wanted to make sure that we knew from this council that the proposal that's, that's before you to change the flood heights is changing it to design flood elevation. I want you to know the effect that it's going to have on your peaks as well, even though it's not always seen from grade, it will have a slight change with the peaks of your, your houses.
Ray, the disparity that you just mentioned on 86th Street is best demonstrated by the, existing floodplain ordinances. The first column is V-zone, the third column is AE. So what you're saying is on a beach, on 86th Street, a V-zone house sits right next to an AE.
Correct. So you, if you took out the X, if you took that X out the middle and put those two houses side by side, that's basically what you have over there.
Right. Then when you, the over, with the overlay, you can see how that is, is mitigated somewhat.
Yes.
The disparity.
Well, the, the V-zone you're still going to have.
You're still going to have that height, right.
The coastal A's, there's nothing you can do with.
But it'll mitigate it by raising the peak of the roof in the AE-zone by two feet.
Right.
Yep.
So it'll be somewhat, but it'll bring it closer. And, and the biggest problem was the X-zones. When, when we adopted that new ordinance, we had no protection, the X-zones. I'm, it's, I'm thankful nobody has come to me with plans to build their structure as high as they want, but they could. It came up with, there's, there's a house on one of the courts, I forgot what it was, Weber Court, that she's in an, she's in an X-zone.
Yep.
Stone Court.
Yep.
And she was here at one of the meetings and she's in X-zone and so she could actually go quite higher with that house right now and there's no zoning ordinance that couldn't stop. So what we're trying to do is bring the zoning ordinance in line with our floodplain ordinance is what we, what we had missed when that was adopted. And then one of the other things we're doing is like Lenore was talking about, we, our zoning, our, sorry, our floodplain ordinance currently does not address 1988 datum. So we want to, one of the paragraphs we're adding is to bring that in line with everything else that we're now, everything's to the 1988 datum for our floodplain ordinance as well. It just, we sort of do that, we refer to FEMA mapping or to the NFIP maps, but we don't state it in our ordinance. So we just put a paragraph in there to state, we're going to go to the 1988. And that was a section on the page, the fourth page of the ordinance, section 300.3.2 is amended to add, "All height measurements shall utilize NFED 1988." Basically, that's what we're trying to accomplish here. And we, you know, we've gone round and round with this, trying to make sure we've covered every base. And so what we're doing is right, we're taking everywhere where it said the different heights and we're just referring back to the floodplain ordinance, design flood elevation, which is the two we have now, plus 11 feet top of foundation. And it will also give us another foot in several zones of elevation for the CRS program to get better, to add to our CRS. Because now we're going to the top of foundation where right now in the A-zones, you're to the top of the floor you're standing on. It's actually to the floor level, finished floor. So that gives you the, the thickness of the floor system additional height for your flood zones.
So when, when we have, I know that everything you said was perfectly clear to you. Existing, existing.
Yes.
You know, what we're doing right now, so we have two feet of freeboard.
Two feet of freeboard, yes.
Okay. And we add that to the, whatever elevation is in that particular zone.
Yes.
So it's an AE8, then we're going to 10 feet and that's the bottom of your, your floor, Joyce?
No. That's the, the floor, the surface of the floor, yes.
Okay. Okay. So we have that variation of eight feet, nine feet, 10 feet. What this proposal's going to do is we're all going to measure from the datum? Is that, is that correct or did I miss something there?
Well, the 11 feet is from me, you know, the mean, mean high tide, I guess.
From the 88 datum?
From the 88, yes.
Right. 88 datum. So what that's going to do is eliminate the height variations that are currently...
It's going to narrow, not eliminate them, but narrow them down, yeah.
Narrow them down, which, which primarily occur between, in between the bay and, and the beach.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. So, and, and this is a benefit to us, why again?
Well, the primary concern is I stated the X-zone. I couldn't make this map small because you would have never seen the X-zone.
Right.
But wherever the black dots are inside of a blue space, all of this, this, here, through here, through here, through here, here, all of down through this whole section, this big area here, that is all X-zone homes right now. And so right now, our current ordinance, because there's no flood, no base flood elevation within that zone, all of those homes, anybody doing any construction in that area can build to their height, still limited to two stories. But we don't limit how big the story could be for the most, except for the crawl and the attic we're limited, but in the intermediate stories, you know, I, I can't tell you you have to have eight, a nine, a 10, 11-foot ceiling height within that story. So technically, someone that wanted to build in that, those sections, they could go up into the 30, high 30s with the height of that structure and the zoning ordinance can't stop it. So we talked about bringing the nine-foot back. That's what started the whole conversation, that we bring the nine-foot elevation back. But then if we're adjusting it and with future of, you know, sea rise and with the bulkheads coming up and everything, why not correct this now to be in line with what's coming down the road? And so that's when we said, well, if we, if we're going to do it now, it seems we keep addressing flood, this floodplain ordinance. It keeps coming around, back and around, so why not take care of it right now and get us to where we're going to be protected for our future and for everything else we've got going on within the borough.
Ray, you keep mentioning the 1988 maps that everything is...
That's this right here.
Exactly. Isn't that subject to change now? Don't, don't they change those maps every 40 years?
The datum hasn't changed since '29, so, and we're 1988 now. FEMA, in, in the federal regulations, they're supposed to relook at these maps every five years. They don't, they haven't done it for a lot of years unless you have an event usually.
I know...
And then it doesn't mean it's going to change if they redo them in five years. It doesn't mean anything would change on our current mapping anyway, so.
I know with the DEP, everything was taken, I was told, from 50 years ago, but they are now going to revamp... are now going to revamp all those for bulkheads, the maps.
Right.
So that would change, not for you, right?
No.
No. Okay.
I, I heard, I got to hear most of these discussions at the planning board meetings, you know, and I, and I'm inclined to agree with this proposal, this ordinance. I, I had, I do have one, one concern that, that I'd like to get addressed, and that is that if we go with this ordinance, that there are going to be some houses in the low-lying levels of the town that are basically going to have, and it's probably not the right terminology, but in effect, have a third story.
Correct.
Now, we've always, I think, in the borough, have jealously guarded that two-story limit that we've lived by here, and that's, I think that's good for the town. So I would like to hear from somebody going forward, how do we propose to, and I'll use the word manage, because I don't want to say regulate, or, but how are we going to manage this excess space, extra space, that, that's going to be in these houses, and, and yet not have essentially a, a three-story home? I mean, even the attorney for the planning board, you know, Andrew even mentioned that at one of the meetings, that they've got a problem with that in Sea Isle, with like the secret room, ha, 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 you know? So how, in effect, I mean, I don't know how to do that. How are we going to do that? If somebody came to you with plans, and, and now we've got a, you know, we've got an eight-foot crawl space under this house, what are those plans going to call that space? Storage area, or?
I already have that. We already have that on the bay. Some of the, some of the elevations are approximately four and a half feet. We've got, I think the lowest I've seen is four-point-three over there. So we already have that situation. We've got houses going up now and houses that exist-
Right.
Where they look like they've got a garage door, but the plan and the CO that we've issued says, "Storage only, no parking of automobiles to keep with our-"
But how do we, you know, is there any way, is there any way that you regulate that? You know, if you put, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, to be a Grinch here, but if, if somebody, somebody comes out with this and says, "Hey, we can put five sets of bunk beds down here. We have ten more beds in the basement," which could equate to six more, seven more cars of visitors. How do we, I don't want to say police that, how, how do we satisfy ourselves that, you know, we're not essentially creating three-story structures with this?
What defines a story?
Right now, a story is under six feet, no parking, for crawl space stories. Under six feet, no parking of automobiles, but you can still do storage down there. We have several of them on the bay right now, because CAFRA says, I've got, I've got to go by CAFRA's laws which supersedes us. If it's a ten-foot coastal A-zone, that means it's ten-foot to the bottom of the structural members. So I've got some over there, and right now, there's one on Sunrise, at one hundred and two-one-five Sunrise, I believe it is, it's, it's a seven-foot-two-inch. And, and it's like, I, I know it's against our zoning ordinance, but it's CAFRA's requirement. They sent me a law, you know, their, their requirement, this house has to be this high. So I, I have to go by what they say. And there's a couple others over there, too, and there are some pre-existing ones as well.
And we've had some conversations in, in planning board about how to, if these spaces are going to be there, if there is a way to allow parking, simply because parking is an issue in town, and to have this space not be utilized for parking might not be so prudent, because the space is going to be there. So what would you allow and what would you not?
Right. That would line up with the NFIP's requirements. Like you said, how do we regulate it? Technically, it's on their insurance company. You're allowed storage, parking, and access to your upper living quarters. That's what the NFIP allows in those spaces, period. So if you try to sneak something in, it should not be our responsibility, or the borough's responsibility. That's your insurance company can say, "No, we're not going to award you any claims for that area, for that space."
But our, but our zoning currently prohibits-
Right.
The parking.
The parking.
The parking, or, or the use of it for residential purposes.
Right.
So there's a, there's an ordinance on our book that, and I think it's just like anything, how, you're not going to catch everyone that runs a red light or a stop sign. I think we do our best to enforce it if-
And storage is defined as to what is storage, because you were asking, what do you mean by storage?
And neighbors are, neighbors are pretty, I think, aware of what's going on, and we had the same discussion in planning board at length. Uh, you know, I think in the name of progress, we're doing this. We're bringing your first floor elevation up higher, because we know sea level's rising. We're doing all this in the name of, you know, thinking forward and preparing for what's coming down the road. The side effect of that is, yeah, you're going to have more space underneath certain crawl spaces, in, in some cases, a lot more space. I think we move forward and enforce ours, enforce our code, and if somebody has living space under there and they have bunk beds, well, then they get cited. And I think it's incumbent upon residents here, I think there's plenty of whom would be the first to call construction and zoning and say, "Hey, they're living out of their crawl."
I know, you're saying, then the parking is permitted, because at this time, you're saying parking is not permitted.
I've, I've said it-
Not right, yeah.
So do we say parking is permitted?
I said this at planning, if the space is there-
Or do we, otherwise, it ends up, there's going to be space there that just simply isn't being used, period. So if it is there, do we now, just like what you're saying, do we allow what the National Flood Program allows? Is that what our, should we model that?
I think if we don't-
What did you say, storage, access, and parking?
Parking of automobiles, yes.
And there's no plumbing allowed down there either, right?
Pardon me?
There's no plumbing allowed in that space? No?
No, that would make it habitable.
That's what I'm saying.
Like a little bathroom?
Is that, is that, that is definitely a no?
Yeah, it's no, yes, that's, you can't have plumbing, well, the plumbing, you can't have like the edge of a toilet or the edge of a tub, because floodwaters can go into there and contaminate your, your-
But you can have plumbing on the outside, where you have a shower and a faucet and whatever.
Not really, not-
No?
Not within the floodplain, no.
But the shower doesn't have a, isn't connected to the sewer system.
It's not connected to the sewer system. You cannot have the stormwater going into your sanitary.
Right.
So what I'm hearing is, the, I mean, you feel that there's, there's adequate protections under the existing ordinances to-
I feel as a-
Regulate that kind of use.
It's almost like if there's the person who, they come and they throw down a, a blow-up mattress, I don't know how we can regulate that anywhere, but I would think-
Right.
But I would think as far as what you can say, you can allow, and if the space is going to be there, we might as well allow the parking and then just enforce.
One of the-
Make the risk that it might flood?
From what I-
Right, you're parking your car there?
From what I-
That comes with your CAFRA, when you get your CAFRA permit, it says, you're supposed to, it, it tells you, you know, know that, I should have one with me, so I could read their exact wording, because it's boilerplate, but it says, "You must be informed that any parking of automobiles within this zone can damage your automobile." It, it's right in, in CAFRA's permit. When I, every CAFRA permit that I get for that area states that right on it.
So, you know, there's, there's a house that-
Good luck to them getting insurance if they does.
Right.
Right, they're not going to, right, then they're not going to be covered if they lose their car in there.
But that's their problem, if they choose to do it.
Right.
Also, the, the properties that are actually rental ones, they're inspected every year, so you would catch those when they go in to do that inspection, and they would have, you know, if they find a violation, they would have to comply.
Can you do something like require that they be a concrete floor? Not allow any carpeting, any, you know what I mean? That kind of a regulation would be some kind of a fail-safe. You can't have a finished floor, it has to be concrete.
Yes, that's what a lot of them do. That's, that's kind of what, it, it has to be water-resistant material, whatever you use down there, is what the FEMA guidelines are. But CL City does have an ordinance that allows them to go back in and periodically inspect these spaces. You could get an ordinance similar to that as well.
And that's through, through the zoning ordinance, or?
I guess it's through code enforcement, yes.
Okay. So we could look at something like that.
Is that all going to fall under the same ordinance?
No, it would be a different-
Okay.
Same with the parking of cars, that would be something else. Right now, we just want to close the, the, call it the X-zone hole.
Okay, because as you were talking, I'm just trying to see if we're going to be able to move forward with the introduction of this ordinance tonight, or if we need to add these type of things, but no.
No, that will come, we would have to bring back a different ordinance for that.
So maybe some kind of that combination of what the floor should be like, periodic ins, or, you know, periodic inspections can happen, or, that could work.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm not like Charles, in Charles, I'm not against, you know, progress.
You're playing devil's advocate.
I just, I worry about the unintended consequences that pop up when we do things like this, you know, that gee, we never thought of that, you know, and here we go.
I think you're going to see what has happened between our house, where the, the house was permitted certain, soon after Hurricane Sandy hit, and we had those interim guidelines. What, what we see there is, they're, they're up high, there's no doubt about it, and they're on the bay, and they've utilized that space to pull, for storage and pulling a golf cart in there, so.
Does, does-
I think that's what you're looking for.
And you wouldn't have it on the street.
I'm going to have to make a phone call.
Aren't there different, if you're going to park a vehicle under a house, isn't there certain building codes you have to have in case the thing catches on fire?
Fire-rated, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the wall has to be fire, so the-
If it's, if it's gas, yeah, that has to be-
But that, that we would review in the construction codes. The minute a permit comes in and says store, or garage, or carport, then we would just adjust, address that from our construction plan review.
You're not worried about it?
I have a ride picking me up at home at four-thirty, so I got to at least make a phone call if I-
Yeah, Ray, Ray has a meeting to go to, so if you don't have any questions specific to the ordinance that's going to be introduced, I'd like to let him go, if that's okay.
And then the other stuff we can work on?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm in my office.
This was so helpful.
Anybody has any questions, go ahead and call me, like, I threw this at you really quick today, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to call me, stop in the office. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.